My name is Catherine Kane. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth and a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, I'd like to thank both of you for participating in government and in this primary election, pre-primary election forum for District Two Duluth City Council seat. The forum will be presented by PACT-TV and linked to the League of Women Voters of Duluth website. The League posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. You may share the entire forum. The League of Women Voters believes that informed citizens are the foundation of a democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. It is a volunteer organization working at the local, state, and national levels to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the League does study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at this forum are those of the participating candidates. They are not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth. Sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. The League of Women Voters realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. We welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities, backgrounds, in all of our activities. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for Duluth City Council, District Two, pre-primary. Chris Adat and Diane Desatelle. And Pierre Tonier. Pierre Tonier was unable to attend. Our forum will begin with candidates giving a two-minute opening statement, followed by the questioning round. Questions have been submitted by League members and citizens and have been vetted by a League of Women Voters of Duluth forum committee. Candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. Each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. After the question round, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement prior to the end of the forum. The candidates will now provide their prepared opening statements. We will begin with Chris Adat.
Hi there. Thank you for having me. My name's Chris Adat. I'm from District Two, born and raised. I grew up on 36th Avenue East, lived over on St. Marie, kind of in my mid-20s. I now reside over by Chester Bowl, off 17th and 8th. I own and operate a small business based up in Herman Town. We're a union plumbing and heating contractor. We employ about 92 people. We do both residential and commercial work. And the reason I'm running is I have some fundamental concerns about the future of our local economy, just given, not to focus so much on the macroeconomic events, but what's going on at a national level with our federal government? Those cuts, the new bill that was just passed, issues down at St. Paul with those budget cuts and our state deficit, and how those cuts are going to make their way down to a county and a local level to fund not only our government through LGA, but just emergency services, support for the unhoused, and just basic city functions. And I feel very strongly that we need to grow our economy in a tangible way, not just as some kind of a throwaway line, but in the sense of fostering and encouraging investment through clear communication, expected predictable outcomes through the construction process for buying land, getting it zoned, getting it permitted, getting it built, getting it completed safely. And I just feel Duluth has a reputation for being somewhat of an adverse place to do business at, and given what lies ahead, I feel we have a unique opportunity and an obligation to the public to provide these services and foster more investment to come into our area. That's why I'm running. That's enough for me.
Thank you. Diane?
Well, first of all, thank you, League of Women Voters and Duluth PAC for working together to hold this candidate forum. I'm running for District Two to be their voice and to help make the fundamental things that work in the city. Government's here to enhance this social fabric, to protect our environment, and to build a sustaining economy. My husband Andrew Streits and I have lived in the same house in District Two since 1998, and we raised two children here who are proud graduates of Duluth Public Schools. I'm a civil engineer, a land use planner, and I'm an educator. I was proud to be the city's first natural resources coordinator, where I preserved thousands of acres of Duluth open space while making sure that we grow our urban space responsibly. I spent time working for the state of Minnesota, where I managed with our partners to clean up historic pollution and restore habitat. And it's great to see development happening along the river. I've owned a small business where I helped prepare plans and ordinances for local governments. I've taught in our schools as a licensed teacher, and I've advocated with Chum and Stepping On Up because we want to work to improve the lives of those who are unhoused and also help the health of our downtown. I've advocated and volunteered with climate groups because adapting and mitigating for climate change is critical to our future. I've seen firsthand the importance of unions, for I've been a member, three of them, in my career. And thank you, teachers, and healthcare workers, and service workers, and those in the trades. I'm running to support our economy by encouraging local investment and attracting new markets. I'm running to help strengthen our social fabric by working to unleash the power of volunteers in our public spaces and neighborhoods. And I'm running to protect our environment for the services they provide, including health, happiness, and the importance of ecological diversity.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to those questions prepared by the forum committee. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. We will begin with candidate DeChau. Just, I'm sorry.
Desatelle.
Desatelle. Yes. Regarding your personal commitment, what prompted you to pursue a seat on the city council? And what strengths would you bring to this position?
Thank you for that question. It's really important to me because I've come to this position with a lot of thought in mind about where I've been and what I have to offer, and it's time for me and where I'm at in my life and the work I've done across the city of Duluth and in this region to give back. And running for city council is one way to do that. And I've worked frequently and often in state and local government, working with commissions and committees, and even as staff, to implement and put policies forward. I understand what it takes to write ordinances, get those tweaked out, and facilitate a wide group of people working together from all different angles to make good decisions. And so, when Mike Mayo decided to step down, I felt that this was time to step up, and I am pleased to say that he is also endorsing me in this move.
Thank you. And Chris, your personal commitment?
Once I caught the news that Councilman May had stepped down, I too felt an obligation to step up. Working in the construction industry, I do a lot of budgeting, a lot of forecasting of what's coming down as far as job creation, who's coming to invest in the region, who's coming to build things here, and I just didn't see a lot of that. And I didn't, had some fundamental concerns again from what was going on down in St. Paul and what those budget cuts will mean for our community. And we have a lot of issues with homelessness and the unhoused downtown, again, emergency services. I sat on the Public Utilities Commission for two years. We have miles and miles of infrastructure that needs to get updated, replaced, serviced, which all cost resources. I now sit on the Planning Commission and just can feel and see the tangible examples of just how it's difficult for people to come here and invest. And when people come and invest, they create jobs, they generate tax revenue that gets collected by our municipality and thus can get reinvested back into our community. So just, again, creating more of a favorable condition for people to come, making it a very lucrative place to come, not just opening the floodgates for whoever, but just, again, consistency, accountability, communication between both the private and the public sector, in my opinion, would go a long way and generate a lot more resources to pay for the things that we need and appreciate.
Thank you. Chris, what is an issue that you are most passionate about addressing as a city councillor?
Construction. So that's where, I mean, I might be belaboring this point a little bit just because it's my background, and I don't want to run on things I can't control or I'm not educated about and come up short. But what I can tell you is the process of coming here, building, navigating the bureaucracy, and coming out the other side unscathed has an impact in our area. It prevents houses from being more readily available and affordable. It prevents large-scale employers from coming here, laying down roots. It has an impact on college students. Our district has some of the finest universities in this part of the state, but some of our biggest exports are our graduates going down to the metropolitan to get a job. No one really feels compelled or encouraged or sees the opportunity to open up a business, to build something, to create jobs. They leave. And I feel that has something to do with why our population hasn't grown for as long as I've lived here. And again, I'm not looking to turn Duluth into the metropolitan area, but again, want to celebrate entrepreneurship, want to encourage investment to come here. We have a lot of opportunity, and when it's a difficult place and the expectation that people come here to make an investment should come out the other end worse than when they came, that's tough. I want to serve as a conduit between both parties, and again, not through deregulation or cutting of any red tape, just an accountable liaison between the two where compromises can be forged and more tax revenue generated. That's it for me.
Diane, your priority?
Well, one of my priorities is thinking about the wholeness of Duluth when it comes to the social fabric, the environment, and the economy. And so, let's start out with the environment. So 25% of our land is open space. We know what of those lands we want to preserve and keep for open space because it brings health to us, happiness to us, it brings also the importance of adapting to climate change. And so, within that is our infrastructure. And that's where I want to see development happen, get our infrastructure updated. We have aging infrastructure. I'm a civil engineer by trade, so I get it. I understand what it takes to get pipes moving clean water, making sure that water stays clean, and pipes moving our wastewater and making sure that that stays up to date and cleaned. And we have a lot to work to do about that. And Chris has a very good point. We're probably facing federal and state cuts, and we're going to have to be creative from a local level how we're going to fund these things. So when we look at new construction, we have to think about how, as a public and in our tax base, we can afford to do stuff and also leverage that incoming new economy and build that up so that they can help us move that forward faster so that more people will come in and enjoy living here as much as we do.
Okay. And Diane, with regards to food deserts, we still have them, they still exist in the city. Access to food sources affects senior citizens, people with disabilities, financially disadvantaged individuals and families. Transportation can be a barrier. What is currently being done, should be done, to resolve this issue?
Well, thanks for that question. I think it's really important. I have been on the Whole Foods Co-op Board for a couple of years and been thinking about that a lot, from low income especially, or those who have transportation issues and getting to some of those sources. There are a number of groups doing some great work out there, making sure that they can get fresh produce into the neighborhoods through Seeds for Success and some of the other groups. The Whole Foods Co-op is looking at making sure they're moderating and having not only the local produce there, but a mix of produce so that we can make sure that everybody shops there and it's affordable because Whole Foods has a number of stores there. We do need to, Eco3 is also doing some great work when it comes to opening up a grocery store in that area. I think it's in the Lincoln Park area where we need to encourage that. We also have some great groups working on transit and thinking about how people get from point A to B and working with the bus transit system, the biking community and the walking community. But the big thing is more important, not only how to get to places, but working with folks and educating them on the importance of getting that fresh food and eating that and learning how to cook it together because that also builds community and a good social life.
And Chris, the same question.
Yeah, thank you. Diane has a lot of really valid points and brought up a lot of wonderful organizations that are working towards those. I can just tell you again, to circle the wagons back onto my earlier point, scarcity creates value, right? When there's not enough grocery stores, I'm old enough to remember Terrance Food Market up the street from my house before that became Sarah's Table. I love that restaurant. But I miss that grocery store. I miss that accessibility. I miss how close, but competition came in and muscled them out, which I think a lot of people, when we talk about growth, are afraid of. But if we can reframe the lens into more opportunity, I don't know how many years we've been talking about another Trader Joe's in town, or, and I've also seen plans and conceptual renderings of downtown grocery markets, just smaller stores, smaller situations, smaller setups. I think with more opportunity comes more chances for people to open up a smaller grocer, improve their distribution capabilities, where foods available. Anytime you see a building that's boarded up or not occupied or not being used is a missed opportunity. That's a chance for a business to be set up there, a grocer, a distributor, another nonprofit. And as far as public transportation goes, there's always going to be a need for that. But again, like anything else, that takes resources, that takes capital, that takes tax revenue, and the more investment we can get into town, the better will be served to make investments, get more buses, more drivers, more infrastructure to transport more people around. And that, I guess I passed my time.
Thank you for both of you for the responses thus far. Chris, I have a question about budget, which you've referred to. What are your ideas for increasing city revenues or decreasing city expenses that would have the least impact on the taxpayers?
So, we might have to be cutting services, potentially jobs, if we don't generate their revenue, right? And I think revenue generation comes from, when someone comes to town and they build a building, right? They build some kind of a structure, they remodel it, that puts trades, folks to work, that puts all the businesses, restaurants, gas stations, hardware stores, wholesalers around them to work goods and services, exchanging hands, generating revenue. Everyone pays taxes on that, right? So, the more we can create that kind of an atmosphere, the more tax revenue gets generated, especially from a robust and active commercial tax base. So, when you, I think of other, I do a lot of research about other communities, not like I don't have my eye on the ball as far as Duluth is concerned, but when I think of like Madison or North Dakota where Microsoft came and set up Roots, they came there, created hundreds of jobs. Bobcat moved there, created hundreds of jobs, and there's tons of other spin-off jobs, right? And again, back to opportunity, when you don't have rising opportu, I miss speaking here. When you don't have more people coming into the pool, paying into it, the cost of staying the same remain, only goes up. You're only pulling from the same pool of people, and your costs are only going to go up more with inflation, cost of living, et cetera. So you need, just as much as costs are going up, you need new people to come in to continue to help keep those costs down. So, I can't make any promises, and I'm not, that there won't be any more future tax hikes without future growth. And that's going to be kind of a dog chasing his tail in the way because when you invite more people, then you also invite more problems. That's it for my time.
Diane, the same question with regards to increasing city revenues or decreasing expenses.
We're going to have a really big challenge on our hand with budget, but we always have a big challenge on our hands with budget. When I was the natural resources coordinator for the city, I can tell you how hard I fought for budget to take care of a quarter of our open space. We depend a lot on our partners to help us out with that, and they do a lot. But we're going to have to figure out ways for us to step up. And I think one of the strong suits we have, there's some situations where we actually could leverage more work within our staff through volunteers, by making sure they know what they can do on the land. When it comes to infrastructure and the economy, what we have to be careful when folks come in to develop, we want to support them as much as they can because they do bring in jobs, but we also have to think about how much public dollars we put into that and how long we have to wait for those public dollars to come back. It's called TIF in some cases, and in some other cases, there's other things we need to do. So we need to find the funds to make sure that that public infrastructure is in place, but we also need to not wait 20 years for that to return, to come back from those businesses that are happening. We are so fortunate to have medical regional offices and the whole system here. People come from all over for healthcare. There is opportunity for the economy to build with just medical equipment and doing that. So I think we do have a lot of potential for a new economy coming in. We've got Amazon coming in, we've got the industrial park building out, but we got to make sure that what they're doing is also bringing in the funding we need for the public infrastructure.
And Diane, with regards to our youth, what programs or services for youth in our community are working? What could be implemented or changed to improve programs and services?
Well, thank you so much for that question. I worked in the Parks Department for a number of years and was fortunate to watch the new development of children's and youth programs and adult programs start to beef up. We didn't have it for a while. We had to cut it because of budget. I'm concerned we're going to have to cut that again. There are some great programs going on for getting kids outdoors, getting them active, youth programs for teams and so on, and having the libraries and so on available to them. I was a teacher for many years in the public school system, and I can tell you that our youth are so important for helping us think about new ideas outside the box and how we can move forward with some of that. There's also our partners working with youth in a lot of different programming events. So I will fight to keep the programming going in our Parks Department because I know how valuable it's been to getting youth outside, learning new skills, and enjoying that intergenerational affairs that they have created.
And Chris, with regards to youth, what are your thoughts?
So, as I've been getting out in the public and getting to know folks, I've been learning more about youth organizations. And one that I was an active participant in was the Kitchikami Collaborative, or not the, part of the YMCA, but Chester Bowl, right? The Day Camp. And I'm very active, was very active once upon a time, but talking with the Chester Bowl Improvement Club, that's a wonderful organization. It's seen a lot of growth. I think that teaches a lot of invaluable skills to young kids, and I think that it's a privilege to be able to have that in my backyard in the district. And I think a more, and granted it's a nonprofit, but being able to have more of a robust private sector, you see a lot of individual contributors that help organizations like that, support charities, again, a better funded government, again, like Diane said, you're probably going to have to roll back your support for some of those programs, but a better funded government can help fund those types of organizations. I also think of organizations like Neighborhood Youth Services. They do a lot of great work with underprivileged youth, after-school programs, keeping kids in school, lunches, cooking, working towards building better futures. Support of those kind of programs keep kids out of trouble and get them on the right path. And again, I don't want to make an empty promise, but with better funding, of course I'm going to support stuff like that. It helps all of us out, but I think we face some clear-eyed realities and struggles about what we're going to be able to pay for. And again, those aren't nice-to-haves for me, but things I definitely want to support. But again, we need the resources and an abundance of them to be able to do so.
Chris, with regards to the environment, you may or may not be familiar with Duluth Climate Action Plan. What role do you see the council having in reducing the climate change effects in Duluth?
So, climate change is very real. I'm not downplaying that, trivializing it, questioning it at all. That's, I think the facts are out, and I mean, the fact we're all breathing in that smoke for the last few days speaks for itself, right? And as far as what Duluth can do, I think unless we're going to make a serious push to get all city vehicles and maintenance staff and emergency services all on EVs and switch our grid over to green energies or renewables, which the grid at the moment can't even necessarily sustain, I think we have to focus on what we can actually do, right? I think we depend on national and state energy policies to help make seismic shifts in the way we live and conduct business and want to guide the way we should do things. We absolutely need to be reducing our carbon footprint, but as far as what we can do as a municipality, other than make it less lucrative to build here, create jobs here, I think the federal government has certainly not done us any favors as far as any Green New Deal or initiatives go in that department. So we're, I'm not necessarily saying that should be put on the back burner, but realistically, what can we do? Obviously, take any tax dollars or incentives that we're not going to be getting from the state or federal government if made available to us, but I think, again, core city services, I think the best intentions come from a good place, but realistically, what we can do, I'm a little skeptical, I guess. Not that I wouldn't be against it. I would be, but I mean, we're not going to get rid of our internal combustion engine motorized vehicles anytime soon, and that's a huge contributor to it.
And Diane, what are your thoughts?
This is where Chris and I probably diverge a little bit more. I absolutely think that issues like this have to start from the grassroots up. I've worked on the national level when it comes to climate change and the state level and continue to advocate for that, but Duluth needs to be an example, and we are going to be an example of what you can do to change. Everybody's going to have to change, and we need to do it and show how we can do it. The Climate Action Plan is good, now we need to implement it and put it into action. There are opportunities for more economy and more jobs to come in as we switch over to the renewable energies. And changing those markets are part of the opportunities we have for some of that infill and so on. On top of it, we need to do this for the next generation, for Chris's kids growing up, for my kids who are now having kids. This is absolutely the most important thing on our plate because our planet is dying and with that comes us. And we are so fortunate because most of our city, we have a good chunk of our city about what you want to have when it comes to sustaining a city in open space. And those open spaces help filter water, help us with extreme flood events, and encourage us to protect that water quality and the diversity of life we have. If we don't have that diversity of life, we don't have the systems we need in place to continue to move forward. So I will fight hard to get our sustainability department back up and in play and reach out to our partners as well to get this work going and get the job started.
Thank you. And Diane, again, on the environment, with all the events in Duluth and the number of visitors, should recycling be a priority? And how could the city implement a more visible and successful program?
Thank you for that question. Recycling should be a priority. What we make should be a cradle, not a cradle to grave, but a cradle to cradle objects and implement those in place, no matter what we create. If it's a car, if it's a medical device, if it's food sources that we need to be able to make sure that we're recycling that. Food is a huge one. A third of our waste is food. We can really reduce our landfills by just getting people to recycle food more. And WSSD is doing a good job, but we need to be able to make it easier for folks to recycle their food. I can't imagine why we are not making, reusing our materials as much as we're mining. We still need to do some mining, but we can be able to find those metals, and it all has to come together as a big picture in order for us to sustain ourselves as we move forward.
And Chris, with regards to recycling, what are your thoughts?
There's a company that I've reached out to and had a few inquiries with, based in Scotland, and they take plastics, any type of plastic consumable, and they burn it down into a bituminous mixture, which can be used for roads and and parking lots, particularly effective in adverse climates, whether it's super hot or super cold. And personally, I'm, I'm a, I'm a little bit of a skeptic when it comes to just recycling consumables, because, I mean, I think we all have seen the, the Great Ocean Barrier reef for the piles of it in Indonesia. I, I think it's, it's, doing, again, back to tangible things that we can do, creating some kind of a lucrative side. To get a company like that, talk to other local contractors on our civil and logistic, utility side about, hey, would you be interested? Would you try this out? Could there be a pilot program? You know, so we can take our own plastics, melt them down, get them into a vituminous, get, pave that out, and use that where our roads are so difficult here, and routinely and annually getting destroyed. It's almost a never-ending problem, you know? But yes, Diane brings up a super valid point. Compost, I think all that stuff is wonderful. But I would be, I would be interested in supporting and looking into getting companies like that to come here and, and create jobs. And as far as like believing in energy, or the, the green energy transition, I am about that. I support projects like N-Tech, too, which sometimes some folks don't support, but it's a process, and we got to take tangible steps to get there.
And Chris, with regards to the vulnerable population in Duluth, there's still a large Duluth population of unsheltered adults, lacking safe housing, services, resources in our community. What initiatives would you support to further recognize them as residents and address their needs?
So, people that are unhoused, or people that, that are doing some rough sleeping and living on the street, the only way to fix that is to get them into housing, right? The only way to, to, to make them not hungry anymore is to feed them, full stop, right? We need to support organizations like The Chum, stepping up on housing. We need to support Union Gospel, all these, these nonprofits and these organizations. But again, all of that takes resources to do. Because the sad reality is, affordable housing and housing for the unhoused doesn't generate tax revenue. It takes it to operate. It's, it's, it's a cost. And I'm not trying to assign a number value to that, but, so when we talk about this perpetual homeless crisis, that affordable, affordable housing crisis, the only way to make, to go back to scarcity creates value, in order to get the unhoused into housing, we need to make housing almost nearly ubiquitous, which is tough, because we don't have a bunch of space. But again, our difficult building conditions don't incentivize builders to come here. I, I see it on social media where people talk about builders only wanting to build multimillion-dollar developments. We, we have to create the conditions where, hey, I can build smaller homes, I can make them affordable, I can do it efficiently, I can get through the process in a predictable way, and with a predictable outcome, and remove the risk of doing business with the city, take that out of the equation. So we can create more competition, steel sharpen steel, and drive prices down, and make more services available, generating more tax revenue to invest in these services. I'm out of time.
Diane, same question for you.
I've been advocating with Chum and Stepping On Up for many years now to create the funding needed, because no person should be unsheltered, and shelters save lives, and housing ends homelessness. And the partners working through Stepping On Up, of which there's about 12 of them now, are doing an immense amount of work with the help of the county and the city, and the, all of the individuals that are pitching in money to make this happen, because we are a community of people, and we care about each other. Many of these folks have a mental health issue or a substance abuse issue. Together, the services that are being provided, we have had, we should be excited, because a lot of housing has been going up for the deeply affordable and those who have been unsheltered, where they have services, including mental health and substance services as well as housing. It's happening, we have a plan, we know what we need to do. All cities are facing this, and we know that when these folks are housed, it saves money when it comes to emergency services and that do-loop we get caught in, where the police come out, they end up in the hospital, or they're in a jail, they come back out, and they're on the streets again. That's just wrong, and it's a waste of taxpayers' money. Let's use it where we should use it, get Foe's House, get the services they need, and help them move forward to a better life.
To continue talking about housing, Diane, housing projects and construction are happening everywhere in Duluth. What types of housing are still needed, especially for the constituents in your district?
Thank you for that question. Housing's needed everywhere in Duluth, on all levels. We call, first of all, we talk about the unsheltered, those that don't have a home. We talk about deeply affordable. Those are, that's 30, everybody should be paying about 30% of their income for housing. So that deeply affordable housing is behind, there's a gap there. There's a Maxfield study that's gone out, where we've really looked at housing across. We're doing a good job filling the gaps, we have more to go, in the middle and the upper ends. And I think, especially in District Two, we've got some, some higher-end developments going on as far as the condominiums and apartments, those are great. We do need more single-family homes, and we need to find the space to do that. And I think we can, within the infrastructure we have. It's going to be a little trickier, where we don't have big, huge spaces. Housing just ends up being a little bit more expensive in Duluth, because we have steep grades, we have bedrock issues and so on, and it's just, it's, we're not, we're different than the other cities when it comes to those expenses. So we have to figure out a way to make that happen more affordably.
And Chris?
Diane's absolutely right. It's, the buzzword's housing on all levels, right? And it's not always available in our district, it's, it's a citywide matter. And it is the terrain, and the materials with the tariffs are out of control, and labor's always going to be expen- skilled labor's always going to be expensive, right? But, but to tie into the, the earlier point here, scarcity creates value. We need to do something with Leicester, that's been sitting dormant for how long? I, I would support accepting RFPs from a developer to see what, what, what could be done about that. And have housing of all levels, right? And have the golf course potentially privately ran. I'm not sure how the, the people in District One feel about that, but again, let's get that out the city coffers and, and load that up with units of housing. But again, the terrain, the climate, the labor, the materials, some of those variables are easy to predict, some of them are not. But one thing that's very difficult in Duluth, and one thing that you can do, is get people in city staff, planning, engineering, the private sector, construction, inspectors, city council. Get them talking more, get them on the same page. Because again, the one thing that, the one constant that remains between us and our surrounding communities is, is more predictable to do business in Superior, and Hermantown, and Proctor, and Esco, and Cloquet. Duluth is kind of a chess game, and I think people see, in my opinion, see complexity as a good thing, where people that are making investments don't. They want to reduce the risk as much as possible to come out the other side, you know, in good hands. And I think that will create more opportunity, housing, and tax revenue for the community, just getting everybody on the same page. The community, there's just a lot of confusion, in my opinion, that results in holdups, delays. I'm out of time.
And Chris, for our final question, what is an important challenge facing our city that has not been addressed in these questions?
An important challenge facing our city that hasn't been addressed? I'm burning, I'm burning my tongue. Job, I guess job creation, raising household median income, right? I think a, a big thing, I love tourism as, as a backbone of our industry. I think we need to, healthcare, construction, shipping, all wonderful things. I think we need to get other jobs, other good-paying jobs, that people can come here for, raise families, their spouses can open up businesses, maybe get jobs in other, other parts of the community. Actually, you know what? A big one would be just working with our neighbors. Hermantown, Superior, having more cross-municipal coordination, I think, would be a good thing. If, if, if that development in Proctor goes, I think that'll benefit people in Duluth in ways that we don't know quite yet, right? If I get it, if I get a job in Proctor, but I live in Duluth, but I buy a car in Superior, we all, that high tide raises all the boats. Cross-municipal coordination, I think. Of all the economic planners, city officials, and civic leaders that I've talked to, no one really talks to, to one another. Everyone's just kind of in it for themselves, it feels like, and everyone's worried about losing tax revenue to their neighbors. So I would say, getting, I'm not talking about like a metropolitan council or anything like that, but just simple coordination between like the planners, the economic, the leaders, the inspectors. Can we get a big employer to come here? Maybe we don't have all the housing available in Duluth, maybe it's available in Superior. But again, I think that would go a long way to generate more revenue. Get, get creative with it, change the tone, be a little bit more accommodating, right? More customer service, I would say. Embrace that mindset. I yield my time.
And Diane, what is something that we haven't talked about yet?
I, I think Chris has some good points, but I, I can say that regionally and within the community, folks do work together. There, there is communication happening when it comes to transportation and housing and infrastructure. I mean, Western Lakes Superior District, for, for example, takes a lot of the wastewater from these surrounding communities. But what I think we need to do is figure out a way to be more creative in how we can look at investments without actually every time having to balance the budget, because I think we need to think down the road, and we need to put some investment upfront in order to get that economy in here. And there is, I think there are other, there's got to be other ways to do it than just our tax base. There are PACE loans that the state has that are low interest, where we look out and say, look, if we take that loan out and put that into our infrastructure and get that built out sooner, that'll bring the economy in, so it'll raise our property taxes and so on. So, I would want to explore that closely with administration and staff, is financing the, the issues we need within the city and within that region connecting those dots.
So, at this time, we ask that each candidate give a two-minute closing statement. We'll hear first from candidate Diane. Your closing statement?
Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my ideas and bring my enthusiasm to this campaign. I care deeply about Duluth, the people who live here and work here, and our public spaces, and our future. It's time for me to give back and put my knowledge and skills to work for Duluthians, because I understand what motivates us, the importance of planning for the future generations, and sustaining a strong economy. I want to thank Mike Mayo for representing the Second District these past years. As, as I reach out to voters in District Two, I, I hear the respect and praise they have for Mike's work, and he's just been such a great example of what can be accomplished when your city councilor listens to you and works with you. And I want District Two to know that I will be a city councilor who responds to my constituents for site-specific issues, such as stormwater runoff problems, or parking problems, or larger community issues, such as decarbonizing our city gas utility, fair wages, and sustaining our libraries and parks. Our future's dependent on how we treat each other, how we care for our environment, and how we support our economy. Responsible growth comes from studying the issues to help find better solutions. Responsible growth is caring for our climate, our public spaces, and our unsheltered. Responsible growth is listening to our vested stakeholders without forgetting about the marginalized voices who we need to hear from more. Responsible growth is making Duluth an attractive place to develop because of its beauty and its vibrant culture. There are no shortcuts in writing good policy and implementing it well. I understand what it takes us to get there. If elected, I promise to serve with integrity and be a diligent steward for our city. I hope the voters in District Two will support me in this endeavor by voting in the primaries August 12th and again, November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chris, your closing statement?
Yeah, I, I want to thank, I want to thank you folks for putting this on. I want to thank Councilman Maye for all of his service over all these years. I think he's done a great job, I enjoyed serving on the Public Utilities Commission with him. I want to thank Diane, although we're competing for this, for this spot, I, I don't think we're too far off on our convictions or what we need, maybe some marginal differences. But overall, I, I appreciate the candor, the tone the campaign's taken. We all, we all want a better Duluth, we all want a better District Two. I think maybe just some disagreements over how we get there, and what those means, how they're provided, right? I, I have two kids at home, my wife's not too thrilled that I'm running in this campaign, but I, I feel really compelled to do so, because I want them to have, I don't want them to grow up and then move away. If they choose to work with me, great, if they don't, if they want to do something here in Duluth, I would love that. But I, to me, I think we need to create more opportunity. I think with more opportunity comes a vibrant culture, more cuisine, more, again, funding. I think the biggest thing of all the people I talk to in all departments of the government, all of our needs really stem from, from one thing, revenue, and a lack thereof it, resources. How are we going to pay for this? Where's the money coming from? And government doesn't generate that on its own. It, it generates it, and it can't, it doesn't, it's not magic. Comes from people coming here, paying taxes. Paying taxes, either whether it's employers, workers, and again, the services and the goods that are exchanging hands that, that, that get taxed. And that's what boosts up our, our coffers. If I can get one thing across to everybody, I also love the green spaces. I, I walk my dogs in them all the time. But again, all of those take resources to defend, preserve, and make new, right? And if, if, again, to just stress that point home, I just want more cohesion, accountability, and better communication between the private sector and the public sector. I want to go down there, I want to have coffee and conversations, I want to have some uncomfortable conversations with all the parties. There's bad actors on the private side, there's people that are negligent on the public side. It's not just one party's fault. I'm out of time.
This concludes the candidate forum for Duluth City Council District Two. Our purpose for sponsoring events such as this is to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited setting. If your questions were not addressed, please contact the candidates directly. We hope you've learned more about the candidates and issues, so you can make an informed choice at the polls on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. We thank the candidates, PACT TV, and the viewers of this forum. PACT TV will broadcast this forum and others. Check their listings for a schedule of times. The forums will also be posted on the League of Women Voters of Duluth website, L W V Duluth dot org. Thank you.